Call the meeting to order and of course, the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act, Section thirty dash forty dash eighty E, South Carolina Code nineteen eighty-seven is amended. All the meeting in the meeting area will be notified of the date, time, location, and agenda of the meeting. We'll have our prayer, Mr. Goedan, followed by the pledging, Mr. Jeffers.
Let's bow out. Father is again to we come to say thank you.
We thank you for our health, life, and strength. We ask God that you will provide us with direction and help us to make decisions that in the best interest of our children and citizens of Darlington County. As we go forth in this meeting, we ask you out there to enter in this meeting that you will provide safe transportation, travel back to our respective homes as we ask in your name. Amen.
Congratulations to the flag. In the name of our beloved, for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get a second? All in favor? Anyone opposed? Question carries? We have no citizens comments and that moves us on to our honors, rewards, and recognitions. We've got four different categories tonight. Our South Carolina Junior Scholars, our Future Health Professional, State Officer, Football Coaches Awards, All-State Football Team, and our Wrestling Awards.
Good evening, parents. Good evening, parents. Good evening, parents, guardians, and well, once we want to present six of our students. We're very proud of them, the Junior Scholars from the Darlington County School District. They are named in twenty twenty-five South Carolina Junior Scholars Program as part of the State Department of Education Program designed to identify eighth grade students with exceptional academic talent and South Carolina. When I call your names, you will look forward to our parents taking pictures. All right, our first, our lead is DeBria Askins from Darlington High School. Our next nominee is Tyler Bridges from Darlington Middle School. And the end too, from Darlington Middle School. Next we have Alicia Maller from Spaulding Middle School. Zoe Hanlon from Hartsville Middle School. And so-called Mahanti from Hartsville Middle School. Congratulations to you all.
Good evening, everyone. We have the honor and privilege of announcing the awesome student athletes that we have in addition. The first group will be twelve Darlington County School District players and the chosen club, twenty twenty-four South Carolina Football Coaches Association, All-State Football Team. We have the privilege of having all student high schools with an additional representative. First, we want to have Darlington High School, Principal is Ms. Gerbey, Head Football Coach, Coach Johnson, and Athletic Director, Coach Norris. First, we'd like to... Yeah, so you come down? We'd like to recognize Jalen Agustin. And also Gabriel Martino.
Right, y'all got to scoot in a little bit.
Parents want to y'all to get up, stand up and get your pictures? Come on in, we'll hold, we'll hold for you.
Next we have representatives of Hartsville High School, Principal Cory Lewis, Athletic Director Brad Boo, and head football coach, Calum Lewis. You'd like to recognize first, we have Mark. Derek Brown. Jackson Chavers. DeMar Alco. All right, next we have Lamar High School, Principal William Menard, Athletic Director Carlos Burges, and Head Football Coach, Coach Burges. First, we have Grayson Booth. Xavier Jackson. Zory Pierce. Machon Weller. And Kendall Dalton.
All right, y'all. There we go, ready? Thank you.
That's fair, exactly. Down approach him.
Red light.
Pick you up, guys.
The next guy is where we have the Wrestling Awards. We have four Hutter High School wrestlers at Burnt Spots in twenty twenty-five South Carolina Wrestling Coaching Association, All-State Wrestling Team. Once again, Principal is Mr. Cory Lewis, A.D. is Brad Boo, and Head Coach for Girls is Coach Al, if you can come down. Our first, um, individual that we recognize is Riley Burton. All right, we have three young men that we're going to recognize tonight. First, Michael Lynch. You hear him coming down? I'm going to ask that Coach Lynch come down as well. Elijah Wilson. And Jackson Chavers. Now, final award recipient and resident, we have three additional resident accolades this year. He was the twenty twenty-five North South All-Star Selection, is also the twenty twenty-five Four A State Champion, and also the twenty twenty-five Four A Just Honor Year, Jackson
Now, just to my clarification, how many state championships is this for you?
Uh, three.
Maybe it's the next one. Congratulations.
Great job.
All right, we have one more award for Lydia Wang. She is a student at Darlington County Institute of Technology and made a vice board with the Math and Science Technology. She served as a community and membership safety liaison for the South Carolina Tech Group, a post of Future Health Professional. We are proud of her.
Well, thank you all for...
This is Zory Pierce from Lamar, just about.
Okay. Do we have CD? Yeah?
This is Zory Pierce, come on down.
Well, thank you all for being here with us tonight. Change of venue because we have so many friends and family. Thank you all for supporting our student athletes, but most importantly, celebrating our student athletes and our academic awards that we had tonight. This is normally the time where we say, if you have homework to do tonight, students and family and...
Lesson plans to make, the teachers.
It's okay if you leave.
You're going to give your chance to go.
You want to stay with us, hang out with us? Welcome to live. Yeah, y'all need Will Merrill. Well, we have awesome Cory. We were glad we got him on the board.
I mean, we were here as being that.
Yeah, I know.
All right, we move on to our consent items. We have our Board Meeting from March the tenth, process from March twenty-fourth. We need a motion to approve those two sets of amendments.
Yeah, Chad moved you, except both.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Our next Board of Education work session will be Monday, April twenty-eighth, six P.M. at Training Room Number Three of the Darlington County School District Administrative Office, and our regular, next regular Board Meeting will be May twelfth at six P.M. at the Mayo Conference Center at, in Darlington. And then we have our Adult Ed Admissions. Can I get a motion to approve those Adult Ed admissions?
Send me.
Can I get a second? All in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Now, we have some reports. Our first report come out is from Care South and Rosenwall Foundation. Dr. Newman, I'll turn that over to you.
As well as members of the Board, as well as our audience, we have representatives from Care South with us tonight, as well as from the Rosenwall Foundation, and if you'd like to come up to the podium, we'd be glad to... Mrs. Schubert, if you could help situate the podium for them and...
I'm Ann Lewis, I'm the CEO at Care South Carolina. Thank y'all for hearing from us. I don't know what to do after that awesome presentation, though. What amazing young people we have. I'm so proud of them. So, anyway, how do you want to work this? What do you...
It is your call.
Oh, dear. Okay. Well, I have a four-page PowerPoint. Can I load that? No, I'm kidding. So, we thank you for considering this. Many of y'all are, may be familiar with who Care South Carolina is. We are a community health center. A lot of people often use the nomenclature of an FQHC, that stands for a Federally Qualified Health Center. Society Hill is actually our birthplace. We began in Society Hill in nineteen eighty, seeing services in what was then the community center before we built our building that's on Main Street. I've been the CEO since nineteen eighty. We've grown quite a bit since then. We're now called Care South Carolina, but frankly, Society Hill is our roots. Or that's probably bad grammar. Well, whatever. I'm here in front of a bunch of teachers, y'all all make me nervous, but anyway. So, we know that you have consideration for what will be the next journey in the life of Rosenwall School, the elementary there over on Church Street in Society Hill. And of course, we know that we have come before y'all as a potential possibility for that. We would certainly welcome that opportunity. There are a myriad of plans that could be available to us. We're thinking out of the box, possibly, and bringing a lot of different services to the community, but making sure that we keep that legacy there in the community. You know, going back to the early days in nineteen eighty, when Rosalie Gerald sat on our board, Mr. Gerald was, he might as well be part of us. He made sure that we kept every eye dotted and every T crossed. These are individuals and folks in our community that mean quite a bit to us. I don't know if you saw the recent posting that we made around the Gerald family, and I said then, she was my mentor, but she taught me more than anything about community. And although I was born in a rural community, I was born in Dillon, that is what really drives who we are at Care South, is serving in our communities. I can't tell you whether we'll do one program or another because we have to wait and see what happens, but there's a lot of opportunity there. Community education, nutrition programs, we really want to put that cafeteria, which is perfect to use in some way, shape, or form. There are services for the elderly that we would like to expand and bring there. Many of y'all may not realize, but we are also the area agency on aging. A lot of people back up and say, wait, I didn't, we didn't know that about y'all. That means that we coordinate these services for seniors in a six-county area of the PD. It would be a wonderful opportunity to be able to expand that in some unique array of services to the seniors. That's, that's on our radar screen. A lot of different things are on our radar screen. You know that this gentleman right back behind me is a powerhouse for community events. He loves doing that, and we love doing that. We love being able to have celebrations and events in the community, and that would be another thing that would be on our radar screen because you've got such a good facility there. You've got a gym where you can hold kind of events, you've got a lot of property that surrounds there, the walking trail, a lot of fun things can happen. You know, we've already been deeded a building there in Society Hill, thank you, at Saint David's, so we, we want to keep that town thriving. I can't say it more than enough. It is our birthplace, it's where we began. So, if you feel that it is a direction the school board wants to go, we would welcome that opportunity. We would be sure and acknowledge the contributions of the community, and we've also had an opportunity to meet with the alumni group out of there, and that's an important aspect of what we would want to do with all of that space, because there's a lot of space over there, is be able to give these, the folks in the Alumni Association, a point where they can also have a home and a place to live and put forth the things that are important in that. The legacies are great there in Society Hill. I, I, there were so many people on our founding board that really made a difference in who we became over these past forty-five years and who we want to remain to be. So, consider us, we'd be delighted and absolutely honored and humbled to be considered. Joe, you want to add anything?
No, I would like to say, what a nice facility it is. It's walk-in-able, if that's a word, and I'd like to thank Dr. Mason and the school board for keeping it as such, but we look forward to, if it should come through the past, taking part and keeping the Alumni Association a vital part as in the community, because that's what we're all about, is the community, and I think we would have two strong foundations. We would have Care South Foundation, and then we'd have the Alumni Foundation, which is the community. Population in Society Hill, I think, is right around three hundred and sixty-eight, and we want to get everybody out, get involved. Tonight, we're very fortunate to have the mayor involved. We've had a lot of little talk going around, but you know, what we do best is healthcare and involving and collaborating in the community, and that's what we want to do. And I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Jackie. It was nice talking with her and her board and hearing what all they had to say, and I think we had a great meeting.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to, to make some remarks to, to the school board and to Dr. Newman especially. We've gone through this before, when the Darlington County Community Action Agency came before the board requesting your approval to transfer ownership of the Washington Street Elementary School, and we have taken that school, and several of your teachers have come and said, it looks better than when you guys had it. So, I would invite you to come at some point and, and visit us, but more seriously about this topic tonight, the Alumni Foundation recognizes that we do not have the resources to maintain what Rosenwall Elementary. We would like to maintain the, the legacy of the school, however, and it's important to us that it, that it be maintained, and of course, it is very difficult to attract people to Society Hill because it's a very small town, and it doesn't have an awful lot to offer. So, Care South is almost like a blessing because they have a vested interest in Society Hill, they have a, a passion for Society Hill, as you can see from the facilities that they already have there, and it's very important to us that it be maintained and that there be a, an opportunity for the foundation, as Ann alluded to, for us to participate as partners with them to ensure that the community is involved, that the, that the alumni, and we're all aging out, this is generally, I think the last class was nineteen eighty-two? Is that correct? So, we're aging out, that's another consideration as well, but we would like to ensure that we, we maintain our identity in the community. Rosenwall High School is lost to us now, but Rosenwall Elementary has a life ahead of it, and one of the things that's important to us, as we've discussed in our meeting, is that we would like to have Rosenwall in the name that, that campus has, that it be maintained, that we have an identity, the Alumni Foundation have an identity in the facility as well, and that the people feel like they can come, the community members can come and be a part of that facility because they have some ownership interest in it, not in the literal sense, but in the passion, heart sense, and that's very important to us. So, looking at the reality of our situation, we're not able to come forth with the dollars that would be necessary to retain the property and to maintain it, because it would be very expensive for us to do that, and it would be very difficult for us to attract the type of interests that would generate the revenue, that would maintain the facility and keep it viable, and that's what we're interested in doing. We believe that... We believe that CARE South will maintain the vitality of the organization, of the facility, and we can also partner with them in a lot of the community events. Joe, we already partnered with Joe, with CARE South already, with so many events in the community. And what I'm hoping is personally, that we actually can revitalize the town, and the mayor, I'm sure, would be very interested in hearing this as well, because there's so much history in Society Hill, and the small towns in our county are dying out. So, this would be an opportunity also to revitalize Church Street, and that's a need. It's in a traditionally low-income area for the most part, and many of the people are getting older, and many of the ideas that Ann and that CARE South has that we discussed just briefly, would offer an opportunity for people who are elderly to come, participate at the facility, and have a stake in it because it belongs to the community. And that's the thing that I think is very important. So, there are lots of things that we discussed in our meeting. Nothing is absolute at this point, but I would really urge on behalf of the foundation that the school board would consider transferring the property ownership to CARE South because with CARE South in place, on Church Street, in addition to the stake that they have throughout the town, we believe that we will have a viable entity, we will have a community interest, and we will have the passion and the love for our alma mater, our school, Rosenwall, which of course, I'm a student, I'm a product of Rosenwall, elementary and high school. And so, the belief is that this will offer us that opportunity. So, we would urge you to consider it favorably. We are in discussions, we will be having more discussions, we will memorialize the understanding we have between CARE South and the foundation in terms of our operation and our stake in, in the interest of the operation, of the maintenance and the upkeep, not so much of the building, but of the interest in the community and the passion that the community has. So again, I would urge you on behalf of the foundation that you all would favorably consider transferring this property to CARE South. So, thank you again for the opportunity to speak to you tonight.
Anybody have any questions?
Yes.
Anybody with any questions?
Comments?
She answered it. Anything else?
Does anybody have any questions?
No, but I have a comment. I just want to thank you, first of all, for, A, for what you've done with CAA, and you know, that is a, that's what we kind of use as our model. When we, you know, that's the standard that we uphold, and you know, it's like, this worked. This was a situation that worked. And what I see with this is when passion meets opportunity, and I think the passion is with the Rosenwall Foundation and the opportunity is with CARE South. And that merger, I think, we can have a very successful transfer in the same way that we had with CAA in Hartsfield. So, that's a, I appreciate the, I appreciate your honesty from the foundation's standpoint, and I appreciate CARE South stepping up and trying, I mean, that's all this board has ever wanted, was that community and that team.
The one thing that I would say is that I'm glad that you, that the two of you, all of you, have come together and had some collaboration. And it appears that you all would be able to work hand-in-hand so that Rosenwall image and Rosenwall's history would be maintained. And I think apparently from y'all's collaboration, it looks as y'all have been able to work that out, and I hope you best of luck.
Dr. Gobin, I think you mentioned history. When the Rosenwall schools were built, there were 5,000 built in the United States. I think my numbers are correct, there are right around 500 that are left at this damn time. So, that would be preserving history in our town in Society Hill.
And Jackie and I go back a long way, and we're going to keep going. We're going to keep going.
Yeah, we appreciate what all y'all have done, and we want to, you know, maintain that Rosenwall name also, so it's important for communities, especially small towns. And I'm from one, and you know, once you lose a school or whatever, and you don't have something to go back in its place, you've got a problem. So, thank you both and all of you for working together to make this happen.
Ann, I have a question. Should I direct someone from the Boys and Girls Club to you or Joe? Because they still have an interest in partnering with whoever to potentially have some type of sub affair for the kids.
Depending on what the school board does, you can direct me to either one of us. We'd be happy about that. What a unique opportunity. I don't want to jump the gun. Thank you.
And just for us, from a timing standpoint, we can't vote on anything except at full board meetings, so it would probably be our main board meeting, or would this one be addressed?
Thank you all.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Ann, I really appreciate that it's been here this evening. All right, now we have our school social workers and family school facilities. Please, if I should have to.
All right, Mrs. Schumer and Mrs. Campbell, I believe, are going to take the microphone and tell us all the good things that have happened this past year.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay? Okay, good. I'm Andrea Campbell, and I am the lead school social worker in our district. And this evening, I'm not going to take up too much of your time, but I'm going to provide you an overview of the essential role that the facilitators and the social workers play in our district, and I'm going to provide you some information about how we are essential in the school district's mission of educating students and making sure of their well-being. So, I would like to begin by introducing our group, and I do want to introduce, we have some of our workers with us this evening. We have Ms. Alethia Woodham, and she covers Pate and Brockleton. And we have Ms. Anne Sweeney Johnson, and she covers Pate, and she's also our McKinney-Bento coordinator. And we also have Ms. Kelly Gilbert, and she covers Bay Road and South Side. And Ms. Barbara Ford, who covers Darlington High School. So, I appreciate you all being here this evening. And some others in our group that they couldn't be here tonight, but Ms. Butler and Ms. Mary Helen Garrys. And Ms. Butler covers Hartsfield Middle School, Ms. Garrys covers all of Ramar. And Ms. Shalonda Graham is at North Hartsfield and Hartsfield High School. And then we also have Mr. Felix Jordan and Ms. Laura Knotts, and their positions are funded by Admin and Operations, and we are called the Social Workers and Student Community Facilitators. And then Title I funds our Family School Facilitators. And I introduced all of them except Ms. Brand. She couldn't be here with us this evening, but she is at Darlington Middle School. And I want to talk about, just briefly, we have lots of roles in our district. I think our roles fit into four main parts, and that's we are advocates. We speak up for those that sometimes don't know how to speak up for themselves, sometimes parents if they've had a bad experience in the schools when they were growing up. So, we are voices for students and parents. We also, and this is how I really describe our role, is we are the liaison. We are the bridge between home and school, because as you can see from this graphic, sometimes there's a crack in the bridge. So, we try to work to make that crack not a crack anymore and everything be successful for the students. We also facilitate mental health services. We do not provide the mental health services, but we try to work very hard to make sure that our students have them. And we also work on attendance. In some of the areas, we do preventative work, proactive work, family engagement, and we also collaborate with teachers and staff. But before I talk about that, there are some traits that I think all of us have to have in our group, and the main thing that we have to have, in my opinion, is when we're serving families, is we have to have empathy. If we don't have empathy, then we really should not be in the social work or the facilitator group. And we have to have compassion, because sometimes our students and families are dealing with really hard things that have nothing to do with education, but they're bringing it inside the school building. We also have to work really hard to build trust with our families and our students, and that is easier said than done, but I think we all do a very good job of working and building trust with our families. And another thing that we have to abide by is confidentiality, and especially those of us that are licensed social workers, we cannot breach confidentiality or we will lose our license. And sometimes that is a struggle to help, or to get staff to understand that. And then the last thing, it's all about relationship building. But just to touch briefly, because I only have 10 minutes, some of our preventive work that we do, we do SEL work, so we work closely with the school counselors and try to help students with emotions. And at my school, I like to tell children, "It's okay to have your big emotions, but we have to work on your behavior. You can't have this really bad behavior in school even though you have these big emotions." So, we do that. We do some conflict resolution. We also work on some attendance monitoring. And this year, we're going to get into it in a couple slides from now, but we are very much a part of the suicide protocol team, and that, we'll talk about it in a couple slides. And then proactive work, we collaborate with the community. We cannot do our work if we don't have collaboration with community resources. So, DSS, CARE South, Habitat for Humanity, Community Action Agency, we're always trying to find out the resources in the community for our families and connect them. And one of my favorite things that one of our workers does, Mr. Felix Jordan, he's at DCIS, and he works hard to make relationships and connections with the students there. So, when they go back to their home school, he continues that relationship, and he continues to check on them. So, I really appreciate that. And another thing that Ms. Alethia Woodham started this year, she implemented it after we came back from the school social work conference, is she has created a newsletter that she sends monthly to the administrators, and then they send it out to school staff. And I have a sample of that in a couple slides too. But like I said, collaboration with teachers and staff is key to what we do and family engagement as well. And then our impact, if you can go to the next slide. And there is one of the newsletters that Ms. Woodham created, and I love it. It's not detailed, it doesn't go into a lot, but it is a nice snapshot. She has a word from her, important dates, updates about McKinney-Bento students, and also helpful links. So, I think it's, not only do we have to advocate and be a voice for our students, but we have to be a voice for ourselves too, because sometimes in the school building, they just don't first think of the social workers and facilitators as being able to help. So, I think this newsletter is a great way to put that in front. And then there's some SEL tools that are actually in my office. One of the things in there is Theraputy, and I have a couple students that love to come and work with the Theraputy, and we talk about is strong emotions and how to handle them, and the whole time is working with this Theraputy. And then you can see Mr. Felix Jordan at Christmas time, who was one of Santa's helpers at Mayo. And so, I got to visit at Christmas time, and I walked into the gym, and there was Santa's helper. So, I love that too. And then here's some of our data, and I would say that social work is not a data-driven field, but I know that data is very important in a school setting. We do have, this year alone, we have over 96 interactions. And what that means is every time we work with a student, we have to put those into Power School. So, so far this year, we have over 96 interactions, and our biggest areas of work are, as you can imagine, is family-student support, parent contact, and staff consultation. So, I think they're doing a really good job with that, and of course, advocacy. I put in home visits. That number is low, but that number is not disappointing to me, because in this day and age, I think we have to be very mindful of just, our first reaction is, "Let's go knock on the door and make a home visit." I think we have to be mindful of safety and see if there are other ways that we can work to accomplish success for our student. So, I think they're doing a good job of that. This year, so far, we have 121 McKinney-Bento students, and that is the guideline for homelessness, and that is a little bit different than the HUD definition of homelessness. In our education setting, it is when a student lacks a fixed or regular nighttime residence, and it's due to a lack of, to economic challenges, that they've lost their fixed, regular nighttime residence. And what McKinney-Bento means is they have access to continuity and education. So, if our students are jumping from one home to another, then we try our best to ensure that they can stay in their home school, because I found this statistic very staggering. Every time a student changes schools in a school year, they lose six months of education. So, that is why McKinney-Bento and keeping them in their home school is so important. And I know I'm talking a lot, and I'm running out of time, but we've served over 500 students for Christmas, and we've also collaborated with Carolina Kids, so 421 of our elementary students receive weekend food bags every week of the school year. And then this is a number I told you we would talk about in a couple slides. The CSSR is the Columbia Suicide Severity Rating Scale, and that is what we use when we enact the suicide protocol. If a student has expressed a suicidal ideation at school, saying they don't want to be here anymore, or anything along those lines, then when we enact the suicide protocol, there is a team of us, and we use a CSSR, and it is a national rating scale, and we ask them the questions, and we go from there. We have done 185 of those evaluations this school year, and that has taken 165 hours and 53 minutes. And there is a team of us. We have the school counselors, the social workers, facilitators. We are the main people on the team. So, in March, we had a record number. We had 46 that we did. And the last slide that I have is our challenges, and I don't really like to say challenges. I think every challenge is an opportunity to get better. But I will tell you some of our challenges in the school district, and one of the big ones is mandated reporting. We are all mandated reporters in our school, so if we suspect abuse or neglect, it is our, it's the law, we're supposed to report it. We have a little bit of confusion, and we're working really hard to eliminate it. I think we're doing a good job. But we just are trying to make everyone understand that they're mandated reporters, and just by coming to tell your administrator or your social worker does not alleviate you of your responsibility. But like I said, it's a great opportunity to educate and give information, and I think we're doing a good job with that. The CSSRs are challenging because we never know when they're going to happen, and we stop what we're doing, and we have to balance the sense of urgency to make sure the child is safe with compassion and thoroughness to make sure we're doing a good job. But the end of the day, every time we do one, our main goal is student safety. And then also, along that lines, I talked about it a little bit before, it's a small team. So, if we have the social worker that's off-campus or the school counselors tied up in the classroom, then we sometimes have to call someone from another school. But when we do that, the student is never left alone, and they're always kept safe. So, that is one of our challenges, but it is an opportunity to make sure we are doing a good job. And then of course, other challenges are communication, and that's just, it's the same every year. Sometimes it's hard to get in touch with families. They don't always give us working phone numbers. So, it's an opportunity to make families know that we're not going to bother them all the time, but we need to have a working number so we can have communication between home and school. And then, this is a, this is a challenge for us. Sometimes it goes back to advocating and speaking up about ourselves and what we can do for the students and the families. Sometimes we're brought into the conversations a little later than we should be, so it makes working with our students and being able to solve their problems a little bit more challenging. But we're working on that. We're advocating for ourselves and letting our teams and administration and staff know that we're there and we're available. And then confidentiality, I touched on that. That's always challenging. Sometimes people don't understand why we can't give them all the information. We give them what they need to know so the student can be successful in the classroom, but families trust us with hard things, and we're not going to breach that trust. And then the last thing is family trust. It takes a lot of work to get families to trust us sometimes, so we don't want to breach that confidentiality. But every day, we come to work, and we appreciate the work that we can do. We appreciate being able to help students. We definitely appreciate you all. I love being able to come and present to you every year to let you know what we're doing. And it's only a snapshot, but hopefully it gives you some kind of idea of the work that the facilitators and social workers are doing in our schools. So, I definitely thank you and Dr. Newman, and we appreciate the support for the last seven years, and we wish you well in your new endeavors. And of course, Title I and Dr. Jenkins. And of course, Title I and Dr. Jenkins, and every person inside of our school building, because if they don't let us know what's going on with the child, it's really hard to do our work. So we are very grateful for that, and we are, of course, always grateful for parents and for our community. So if you all have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am?
You said that you all did not provide counselors, counseling services, your social workers, that you all facilitated. Is this facilitation of programs, educational information, or? I'm trying to get in my head how your social work and your counseling work hand in hand as far as services.
Now, we work closely with the school's counselors, but if we have families that request outside mental health services, the social workers and facilitators do not provide that, but we do make referrals to PD Mental Health and stepping stones that we use, and we follow along. Now, the counselors don't tell us what they've talked about with the students, but we follow the process to make sure that the families have done what they need to do so they can get those services. And they're inside our school building. So PD Mental Health, for example, is at Thornwell, and they will pull students for about 30 minutes to an hour, depending on the counseling that happens. And it's a weekly visit that the counselors have with the students.
So social workers and our counselors can identify, make that referral?
We do, but we have to have parental consent. We can't just make the referral without, in PD Mental Health's form, the parents don't have to sign anything, but we always have to, there is a box on there that says, is the parent aware of this? And we do not make a referral without the parent being involved. Does that answer your question?
I'd like to ask, how are the food bags distributed?
They are distributed on Fridays, and we leave it up to the schools. But what happens, they get packed usually on Wednesday evening, the social workers and facilitators go to Carolina Kids and pick them up on Thursday, and then we take them to their schools and we distribute them that way. Now, I can speak, well, I've been at about eight different schools in the district, but this year at Thornwell, we have bins that I've lined up in the cafeteria with the teachers' names, and the teachers describe them after lunch and then give them to the students. I know at some schools, they will call them down to the workroom. We would like them to make it as discreet as possible, but we definitely don't tell each school how to do it. We want them to work out what is best for them and the students. Yes, ma'am?
I'm concerned about suicides that have been taking place in the district.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm just wondering whether or not, if a child is in crisis, do they have a way that someone there at school they can talk to, they can share with, even after school hours, that they can talk to someone concerning what's going on with them, whether it's at school or at home?
Right.
Is there a way they, they got some type of communication?
At school, we do have, where the students are in crisis, that they, they form bonds with someone at school, so they will tell us and they will talk to us. But if they express a suicidal ideation, then we do have to follow the protocol and answer those questions. And then I know after hours, we have the Bark Alerts on their devices, and we will get alerts from the school if there has been some kind of, something, suicidal ideation or violence or a threat has been made, then the appropriate people that have been designated from the schools will get those alerts. Because I know over Christmas break, I had opened an email, this was a couple of years ago, and it was an alert. And when we, I got in touch with the principal, and we sent law enforcement there, and we made sure that the child was okay.
So the alert gets initiated from the home?
From the device. And I don't want to, I'm not a technology person.
It's initiated by their email account. So wherever Google account is, it's initiated from that.
Chad, can you?
Could you?
I'm sorry. Who's supposed to be here?
So that's initiated from their, their school district account. So as long as they've sent that, be it an email, Google Drive, or any of those, any of those applications, that notification goes out to the corresponding school. But it has to be from their school account.
And there's also training that we do with our students, correct? I know my kids have been through suicide prevention training and things like that. Does that come from your group that's teaching kids that?
It does not come from the facilitators or the social workers.
Maybe, yeah, I'm not sure where that's coming from.
Comes from the school counselors.
Okay.
And Mrs. Campbell, just again, kind of following up on the CSSR piece, just in light of everything that's going on and has happened. So can you describe how that process gets started? Like, what initiates that CSSR protocol?
What happens most often, and I will speak for my schools, because it's been happening quite a bit in my school, is a teacher or a student will overhear the student say something about, I don't want to be in here anymore, or I want to die, or something along those lines. And then as soon as they hear that, they, at our school, they come to the school counselor or me, and they also let the administrator know. And then we immediately pull the student in the school counseling and social work, and then we start the process, we get the paperwork, and then almost all the time, we always let the parents know what is going on. But that's how it starts at my school. I don't know if the facilitators or, do you all have anything different? Is that how it happens at your school, too? Okay.
And then, and then, go ahead.
No, go ahead, go ahead. It's probably the same thing I was going to ask.
Yep. And so, so once that's started and the parent is involved with it as well, what type of follow-up happens?
We have to, if we have evaluated them as sometimes even low-risk, we send them home and we let them know they cannot return to school without a note from a medical person, professional that has cleared them to return to school. And then we have a re-entry plan that we make, and then we also have paperwork that the parents sign about signs to look for at home, and they sign the document, and we sign the document. And so that, I feel like we have a very good process.
And you've had 185 of those situations across the district?
Yes, ma'am.
So far this year?
Yes, through March. We have not reported April yet.
And I was, and just a little more on that, so you send them home, but what do, is there follow-up once they're home? I mean, do you refer them? Do you help them get the medical help they need?
Yes, even if they are assessed as low-risk, I would say, I don't know the percentage, but it's a high percentage, they're always referred to mental health services, either school building or outside, but we do follow up with them, and we keep checking on them, because we have, sometimes we have repeat evaluations that we have to do, and that is one of the numbers that we track on our spreadsheet every month that I report for the district. But we do check on the students, we take it very seriously.
And this is just, this isn't really a question, but more just concern as community member, school board member, human being, you know, if your team has thoughts of, you know, what can we do? You know, what are the, you don't have to say, you don't have to answer me, it's not right. And it just, it's just, it's heartbreaking to everybody I know.
It is very heartbreaking.
And I'm sure it's very heartbreaking for you, having to sit and do those 185 evaluations. So thank you for being there on the front line and doing that work, because you're going to make me cry, because it is very hard, I'm sure, I can only imagine. So I just wish we could do something. Let us know what we can do, anything, and we'll try our best.
It is very emotional.
Thank you for walking us through that process, and thank you for all of our social workers and facilitators that are here with us tonight. I know we thank you once a year, but the reality is every day, you are in the, you're with our kids and you're with our families, and I just want to say how much we appreciate that. And I know there are so many stories that are untold, that can't be told, and, but the reality is, without you, there would be some worse stories. So thank you for all that you all do.
Thank you, and thank you for letting us present. I'm sorry I got emotional, but it is very emotional.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Seems a little harsh to move on, but from that, it's just kind of hard, but moving on to budget reports.
It's hard to follow. The budget reports in front of you, if you have any questions, let me know. There are nothing unusual this month. We did just get the March information, and I was looking at it this afternoon. So I also did talk to the county about several of the items, the Fee and Lou that we talked about a couple of meetings ago, and they did give me some indicators of what has increased those numbers, so those numbers are real. So I like to, I like to verify when they're out of whack, but, so I will be doing projections, closer revenue projections for the work session. Right now, the Senate, we got the newsletter first thing this morning, the Senate met last week, I don't think they met for very long, and now the numbers that they came up with will go to the Budget Committee next week for the 22nd and 23rd, I think. And so we hope that we get some real figures the first week of May. Right now, they've still got the $1,500 for the teacher cell increase, so I'm going to take that, and it seems like they've all pretty much in general consensus that that's what they're going to do. I'm going to take that and do projections before the work session. I'm going to use that same percentage and project for other salaries like we normally do, and I'll have those numbers that we can go over at the April 28th meeting. We did get the 135th day ADM numbers, they're still checking some things, but they're 99% good, so we're going to throw those into the Supplements and Allocations manual, calculate all the supply funds and all of that this coming week. And so it'll be all about budget and Finance Department for the next two weeks. And then we'll have some numbers, we'll have some projections for you on the 28th, so we'll know, you know, hopefully know where we stand. We have to do first reading at the first meeting in May, so that's kind of where we are. As far as the numbers, you know, I've also, I've also been doing my own little mini salary study analysis. I pulled information from eight other districts that are similar to our size, because, you know, HR and finance get complaints, you know, occasionally about, you need to look at our scales, so I'm doing a comparison, and Dr. Newman and I are going to go through those numbers and look at them and see if we're off base anywhere. I've just about gotten all the information, and I'm sharing it with those other districts. It won't be a, you know, public official salary study, but I'm doing mine just for budgeting purposes, just so we're comfortable when people ask if we have checked it, because it's been a few years since we did the official one. But, so, has anybody got any questions?
How did our 135-day, I know you said it's not 100, how did we look, how did we look coming in?
It was about 40 kids low, which doesn't make much sense to me, but anyway, I've gotten access to the data, and I've been looking at the data, too, and IT had some questions about some of the numbers, so they're, they were verifying those.
And can we guesstimate what that impact's going to be? Because the last thing you were talking about-
That shouldn't be much. I mean, I don't, yeah.
But the initial one that-
The initial one was 221, and so that was, yeah, that's a lot larger number, yeah. I don't foresee that being a huge number.
Not this budget, but for future budgets, what would we need to do as a collective group, or how can we identify if there's a need where our schools can actually hire more mental health providers?
Well, we include that in, you know, in our projections, if we have the revenue capacity, you know, we, Dr. Newman will have a list of all of the requests for any full-time employees, so that'll be part of our analysis when we do the budget projections.
Any other questions?
And I think similar to what you saw and heard tonight from the social workers, we can also put together the mental health professionals, because actually, we have increased our services significantly in the past couple of years. But we can certainly have Dr. McCall and some of her group present, so you all can hear how those increases have taken place over the past two to three years, where we stand, and then potentially what's the need might be. I think that would be helpful.
Any other questions?
And just one other comment, sorry. As far as the ADM, ironically, you heard the number that we were down from the ADM, but physically, the number of students is a lot less than that. The ADM is average daily membership versus physical students there in the building. Ironically, the 135th, we're showing not as many students down as we were at the 45th. So ironically, I believe it's about, somewhere in the neighborhood of about 30 to 40 students down for the year, this year versus last year, physically at this time of year. And at the 45th day, it was actually more than that. So we're really trying to get our arms around what this ADM piece is. As Ms. Douglas mentioned, we're still, there's eight schools that we're having to verify numbers for in Power School to make sure, because they're having the double shape numbers. But again, when we're 40 off for the whole year, year to year, physically, we need to make sure that that, that numbers is correct as possible, because it is one.
All right, we'll move on to superintendent's update after, and I'll let you know.
Yeah. And, you know, I have my list to talk about the good stuff, but I, there's, I just can't look forward without talking about the difficulty from this weekend. I don't have any great explanations or answers for what happened. We lost a student, we lost another 16-year-old, and there's, there's no words to describe what you do about that. And I, you know, the first time this happened, you just try to figure out and wrap your head around it, but this is the third time it's happened this year. And, you know, we see our kids seven and a half hours a day and try to do everything we can, first and foremost, to educate our kids, but that's second. I mean, you heard Mrs. Campbell talking about all the other things that we try to do for our kids, and whether it be mental health or whether it be physical, we work with agencies, and it, we cannot do this by ourselves. We see our kids for seven and a half hours a day, and we don't know what's going on in their lives. All we can do is, when we hear something and we sense something, we reach out to our kids and our families, but we got to, we got to have our families helping us with this as well. And the reality is, we're trained to teach kids. That's, that's what our jobs are, is to teach kids. We're not trained to be, you know, experts in the mental health field, or experts in the areas that you heard about tonight. So our classroom teachers are trying to do everything they can to help kids, but at the end of the day, another child died this weekend. And listen, we'd spend all the money in the world to make that not happen. We would spend, just tell us what to do, tell us what to spend it on, if that would bring, if that would prevent a child from taking their life, we would spend that money. Nobody up on this stage would not spend that money. Nobody up on this stage would not spend that money. Yeah, so I just, so I'll talk a little bit about some of the, well, you know, honestly, I'm going to hold off on that tonight. I just, I think I have to leave it with that. And, you know, we need to pray for the family that was affected this weekend. We need to pray for the students and the school and the staff that don't have answers that they dealt with today. Thankfully, that our counselors, mental health counselors, school counselors were available there. But honestly, we need to pray for society, because something's wrong right now. When we have our kids not knowing that there's any other option, we really need to pray for society and for our educators trying to figure it out. So with that, I'll leave that for the superintendent's update.
All right. Let's see, would you like to-
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Maybe.
Just thank you to our speakers tonight.
Sharing information with us is important, and I appreciate all the work you do and every educator in our district that's out there every day working with our kids. That's why we're here. Kids, students, it's what we do. It's what every one of us is here for, is for our families and our community and our kids. So thank you for being the people you are and for doing what you do.
Like Dr. Newman said, our prayers with family, it's hard to understand, but our society is, I don't know where we hit with some of this, but seems to be more and more prevalent, but it's not acceptable no matter what. And anything we can do as a board or communities to make things better, we definitely want to do that. And we appreciate all what y'all do, and it's going to make it any easier when it happens. But I know you're doing everything you can. And if someone hears something, say something. So, and again, it's our prayers with family and the school. It's tough on everyone. Okay, that's it.
Charles.
Tiffany.
I've just been on the board for four months, and I just, it was occurring to me through all the presentations that we've heard, what a wonderful group we have that are spending time with our children, and thank you for that.
All right. Here. Score?
I'm in a place right now with Dr. Newman heartfelt of things that are happening, and it seems that we can't do anything about it. But I know that we can pray.
There's one thing all of us can do is pray. If nothing else we can do is but pray. And pray for the social workers and their counselors and the mental health, those that are out there on the front line every day, and they're seeing these children every day. And I'm pretty sure they're seeing a culture that they've never seen before. I'm pretty sure they're seeing some things that they never thought they were witness in their days as being professionals. And sometimes you question yourself, because I once was a therapist myself. And when you see the children, and sometimes it's in disbelief, and sometimes you just say, "Lord, I don't know what to do." And I understand, because every time you lose a child, whether it's your child or not, you feel it. It's heart wrenching. When I got the news about the situation in Lamar, it was heartfelt, because we're here for the children, and we don't want to lose one child. And so the community needs to know that we feel the heart, we feel the hearts of our people. We feel the hearts of our children every day. And some days, we have to go home and cry, because we don't know what to do. And we have done all we know how. But one thing we all can come together and do is pray for these children. And pray for them, like they said, we only have them seven and a half hours, but God can have them all 24 hours. And let him pray to cover these children, because we just don't know what's happening right now. All we can do is pray, and I feel that same sentiment right now. You know, I'm a minister as well, and I pray for these children every day, and I pray for the teachers, the parents, and everybody, because we can't do this by ourselves. And Dr. Newman said, "We just can't do it by ourselves. There's no way." That's all I have to say.
Our motion's laid out there. Okay, we'll move on to personnel actions. Can I get a motion to personnel actions with the addendum?
Yeah, we need that personnel action with the addendum.
I can get a second. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Looks like we have a need for an executive session tonight for personnel matters and contractual matters. I'll take a motion to move into executive session.
I mean, that we move into executive session to discuss personnel matters and contractual matters.
Can I get a second?
Sure.
All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. We'll move into executive session.
All right, I'll take a motion to come out of executive session.
I move to come out and take the second.
All in favor?
Aha.
Anyone opposed? No actions were taken, no votes were taken during the executive session. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Go move.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?